One nation, under God, being just as for all.
All right, number two, open public forum for anybody that's not on the agenda that wishes to speak. Hi Cliff.
Good evening, thank you again for having this as part of the agenda. I'm Cliff Johnson, member of the Cold Spring Area Historical Society, and just take advantage of this opportunity to say, when we say Cold Spring area, if you put a dot on farming and put it out on Pearl Lake, everything that's in that rectangle is an area of our interest. In other words, we've got things from farming, St. Nick, Cold Spring, Richmond, Rockville, Jacobs Prairie, Pearl Lake, oh, and south of town, I forget now.
St. Nicholas.
St. Nick.
St. Nicholas, thank you. Those are all areas of our interest, and our museum is open every Friday morning, just about every Friday morning, from like nine till eleven, so please feel free to come by any Friday. But the reason I'm here tonight specifically is that our next speaker is coming up on September 5th and invite the community and you, the council, to it. It's titled, "The Bizarre History of Minnesota," and Chad Lewis, I've not heard him, but those who have say he's very entertaining, he's very educational. He'll be talking about paranormal, bizarre, interesting, curious things that have been, happened in the past of Minnesota, and that he's researched and can, you know, present some interesting information about things that you may not have ever heard about in Minnesota. It will be on Thursday, September 5th, 6:30 to 7:30 in the evening at the DEF Building, the district education facility, which is right across the parking lot from St. Boniface Church. There'll be coffee, and cookies, and water, and it's free and open to the public. Not sure what else to say. It should be a fun, interesting evening. Any questions? I do have a few brochures if anybody would like.
Thanks Cliff.
Thank you.
Thanks Cliff.
Anybody else? Otherwise, we will move on to number three, approval of the amended agenda. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second that.
Shannon seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number four, consent agenda. Recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Jamie makes a motion to approve, I need a second.
I'll second that.
Shannon seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number five, approval of Fire Fest 2020. Matthew Van Litt.
Yes.
Matt, can you?
Sure, I can.
Yes, thank you.
So, just here to request that Fire Fest be approved for next year, 2020.
I'll read the recommendation then.
Please.
Recommendation to endorse the Fire Department Relief Association's annual presentation of the Fire Fest for 2020, provided that the events, the event is funded through the association's general fund. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it, any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies, have a good evening.
Thanks a lot. How did the, how did the other one turn out, the last one?
Turned out okay. We were still tallying.
Okay.
We had a couple outstanding bills first.
Okay. How many people showed up, do you know?
About 4,000 this year.
Okay.
It was really, I think it was a lineup issue where we were having trouble getting people to come here. With all the events that are happening around their area, from Lake Jam to WeFest and all those other things, there's, in a lot of cases, there's a radius clause, so if they're playing in a certain place within 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, they can't come up here. And we bumped into a lot of that, and we used Rettos Productions to help us this year, so I know that they worked very, very hard to find what they could and bring us the best talent they could, and it worked well. We're gonna probably work with them again next year, so now that we're a little bit ahead of the game now.
Yeah.
Because we didn't know what to expect with, working with those new partners, but very, you know, looking forward to next year, and very hopeful that it continues to be a good success and bring a lot of people into Cold Spring, and that's kind of the, you know, the main draw here is just to have a whole bunch of people here, spend a lot of money, and have a good time, and come back.
All right, thank you.
Thanks guys.
Okay, then we'll move on to number six, ordinance number 372, rezoning request for Smarton Construction, Derek Mueller and Ralph Leiter.
Hi Derek Mueller here. Ralph is not present tonight, but here to ask for the approval of rezoning of our property over at 119 Second Street in Cold Spring, so we can put that into a PUD, and continue to move forward with future development on that property.
All right, recommendation to approve ordinance number 372, rezoning property at 119 Second Street North from R1 Low Density to R1 Low Density Planned Unit Development. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it, any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Okay, number seven, resolution 2019-19, approving of the final plat known as Oak Creek PUD, Derek Mueller, same thing?
Same thing. I'm just asking to approve the final plat. We have applied it out for seven houses on that property tailored toward retirement age for Patty Holmes, so.
Okay, recommendation, to approve resolution number 2019-19, a resolution approving of the final plat for Oak Creek PUD. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second that.
Shannon seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
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 Against, motion carries. There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks Derek.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot Derek. Number eight, Cold Spring Creek Dam Removal Presentation, Bruce Hall.
Hi folks, my name is Bruce Hall. I'm a teacher at Cold Spring Recording, and I am here pretty much on behalf of my students actually, who challenged me to take this on because they have found over these, it's been kind of an issue that they reached to get involved with. I teach natural resources, science, and all the other sciences at Cold Spring. Some of you may have some background on this. I am fairly actually new to this issue, so I haven't got the background that some of you have gotten. I think Doug can fill us in on some of this as well, too. If I can get this up. There we go. Look at that.
Want to step closer?
Oh, okay. What we are asking is that the city council requests the city of Cold Spring submit an application for a dam removal plan and draft redesign from the Stearns County Soil and Water Conservation District for Cold Spring Creek. There is, if you're unfamiliar with this situation, on Cold Spring Creek, or some of you may know it as Brewery Creek, it is the main creek that runs through the city of Cold Spring. It is the cold spring for which the city got its name. It starts just west of the city, comes from groundwater source that comes up from a groundwater aquifer. That water is used by, has been used by the city, has been used by the brewery, is used by various agricultural resources. It's a kind of a finite resource in and of itself, but that surface water from that creek flows through the city and flows down to Stock River. The creek sits basically right, or the dams sits right basically in the middle of the creek, and it primarily obstructs movement of fauna back and forth from the Stock River up to the headwaters of the creek. The main fauna we have, and this is a cold water creek, it's kind of a unique feature, a unique aquatic feature for this area, certainly for Minnesota, is that we have brook trout in this creek. If you drink the lost trout beer at the brewery, they may say that maybe there's not there, but I can tell you there's quite a few brook trout in the creek, but it's a year-to-year situation where they only basically have access, if I can, let's see, it's not moving at all. There we go. There's a shot on the left-hand side of the dam itself. The dam, it's actually just basically a concrete dam, it's what we call, they call it a sheet piled dam. It's a concrete dam, it sits about, what'd you say, about two feet off the water?
It's not even that, it's 14 inches.
14 inches, 14 inches off the water. It's, again, it's basically right in the middle of the creek as you go through the town, and it, pretty much for these, most of the fauna in the creek, we know that it basically blocks the, there's two different parts of this creek. There's the part below the dam, there's the part above the dam. Above the dam, there's an area that you can see on the left, which is right immediately above the dam, which is kind of a wide area, which is typical of dams, that there's this area that collects sediment behind the dams, slowly fills in, and this has over the years, slowly filled in, we've kind of monitored whether that's happened, so was DNR. As that fills in slowly with sand and sediment, it also warms up the creek. And this being a cold water creek, that's kind of an impediment also to some of the cold water fauna that exist in the creek, including the trout. So, as you see these slides, very few trout exist in this area of the creek. Most of them are on the northern part of the creek above Red River Avenue. The reason this is coming forward now and hasn't come forward as much in the past is because the city has done some work with stormwater manipulation in 2017, where a lot of stormwater was rerouted, and that was causing a problem on the creek itself as well. Also, the construction on Red River Avenue that was planned, that was completed last year, was another impediment that needed to be hurled, that needed to be taken care of. This is kind of the next one that we've seen that's coming along. My students have been working on this creek for about six years that I've been teaching here in Cold Spring. Before this, the district has also been involved in, at the habitat redevelopment up by the brewery, which was done with the brewery. So, the big, what we'd probably be changing, is the section of the creek that we'd be changing a fair amount would be this section right here above the creek, where it's sedimented in quite a bit, you can see how shallow this is. This, according to DNR, used to be an area that was sometimes three or four feet deep, and would be some really ideal habitat for some of the cold water fishing, trout that existed in this area. The dam holds back that sediment. Eventually, this will sediment in, as most dams do eventually, that would sediment in completely, and the dam, the creek will find a way around that. What we would like to do is take out the dam, have that creek basically hopefully flow through, we're hoping that this wouldn't require any kind of dredging. We think that from all of the sources we've talked to, it probably would not, and it was a significant concern of the residents. The creek itself would form, would form a path through there. We would redesign it such that it would probably have a similar aesthetic value, we hope. We want to get all of the residents' input on this draft plan. It's not something that anybody's in a great hurry to push through. Something that we can take our time with, get a request, get an application in, get a draft design, and you, as the city council, and the residents can take a look at these and say, "I like this, I don't like this." These are the kinds of things we want to say. We know we want to save the rain guards and things. The residents have done a great deal, taken a great deal of time, put a great deal of work into some of the work that's done around this, and they have a great deal of amount of investment in this. We want to save as much of that as possible. The only thing we really want to remove is the dam, which is, which is an artificial water, we won't call it illegal, but we know that the DNR probably is going to require this to be removed regardless at some point, and whether we do it together, we do it, they request to require it, are going to be two different issues. So, we'd rather do this where we got everybody on board right now. We've taken a lot of time. This is an area, you can see, put on the downstream of the dam. If I can bring the next one up. I don't think I'm going to be your tech advisor here, Bridget. That's actually a meter stick in the setup behind the dam that shows it's only about six inches deep at that point. This is downstream of the dam, a section of the creek that flows to the Stock River below the dam. Again, this is one of those things where we have, at a certain point, we're kind of at a tipping point, especially with things like these trout, where they're very limited habitat that they can use right now. They, we know that they do cannibalize each other quite a bit because there's just not a lot of movement of other aquatic life in that area where they exist. We have some possible funding sources. We know the brewery's been involved in this, and they're interested. Cold Spring Granite is involved, they would like to, at least if we're thinking about things like putting, instead of the dam, putting in some granite boulders, kind of representation of the area, to, you know, as a current break, be aesthetically pleasing as well, also would be good habitat for some of the fauna there as well. There's a number of different funding sources, we got some potential for doing a Section 319 grant. We're not sure how much this is going to cost, to be honest with you, until we see where the redesign would go. Right now, we have these people on board. DNR Regional Action and Water Resources, Nikki Blake Bradley, she is the one who would permit or require removal, outright removal of this dam either way. Right now, she's on board and would like to see a redesign in front of her. She was at the planning commission meeting in June. DNR Fisheries, which is out of the Stock River, it's up, is Mark Pelham. The Fisheries Office has requested that this be something that's a priority for removal on this creek. We have the Stock River Watershed District on board, Stearns County Soil and Water Conservation District. Greg Berg would be probably the specialist who would do the redesign. We have the quarry schools donating my time, my kids are donating their time, and they certainly would like to be involved in this, and they like this because it's kind of an example of local government in action, working with other governments for a good cause. We think it's a good cause. Cold Spring Granite, Cold Spring Brewing Company, we think the city's on board with this as much as possible. We hope to get the residents bought in and give them, empower them, I hope, to make some decisions on this. And we know, again, we want to say that this is not something that we want to push down anybody's throats at all. This is something that we want to basically take some time, get a redesign, and have everybody sit down, take some time to take a look at that, and see what do you like and what don't you like, and vote on that, and go from there. And then possibly, you know, maybe a year from now, start to consider the actual implementation of this design at that point. That's all I've got. Any questions?
I have several comments, I'll wait for others.
Anybody got any questions for Bruce right now?
Who would be responsible for the design? Would the city be responsible for the design?
Well, be responsible for the design, the Soil and Water Conservation District would do the design at your request.
Okay.
And they would, the city would be doing this on behalf of the city as well as the streamside residents.
Okay.
I'll let you speak for a couple of minutes, okay?
Okay. In front of you, you have a sketch. That sketch is my preliminary design of something that would preserve our waterfall. It's not a dam, not a registry of dams.
It's not a registry.
So, it's not a huge term dam, it's just a little waterfall feature. The sediment depth back to behind it is about six to eight inches. It was six to eight inches less sediment before, there was no big hole there. So, some of the things stated were kind of misplacing where things were from prior area. If you look below in the pictures, you saw the depth of the water below the dam is also six to eight inches deep. It doesn't change, whether the dam is there or not, the water's going to stay about six to eight inches deep. Now, the idea of a fish ladder, or a way for a fauna to go up and down, is a good idea. I don't, we don't have any big objections to opening that up so that things can move up and down. So, basically, we're talking about a fish ladder. But what we as a resident would like to do is preserve a waterfall feature, which we went through a great deal effort with DNR to put it in. Perhaps it was not done correctly the first time to have a fish ladder alongside of it. The drawing you show, you see there, and let's get one for you, I'm sorry, I didn't grab one for you.
There's extra one here.
So, you know what I'm talking about here. Shows that this pond, which is relatively short, it's about 100 feet long by about 25 feet wide, and the water flows through there during slow times when the water is low, it takes about 90 seconds to go through, maybe 120 seconds to go through. I measured today after that quarter inch of rain we had, it took 40 seconds for the water to start at the top and go through, so it's not warming the water up. That is really quite an impossibility. In fact, there's more likely, there is a, two streams that join just above that little pond. One comes from the golf course. It is the water from the golf course, which is very slow, and has lots of time to warm, and then there's the mainstream. So, I think the temperature is actually, increased temperature, is coming from this side stream coming in and not from this little flat. And so, whether the dam is there or not, is not going to change whether the water is warmer downstream than it is upstream. It's going to stay the same. It's not the real source of the heat. But, given all those discussions, what I've shown there is a little drawing that would preserve both. That is, it bifurcates the creek about the top of that little pond, and part of it to the north side, which is to the right as you're looking at it, would still remain somewhat of a pondish thing but narrower. Some of the dredge that he's proposing to dig out would be put up against the shore and form a little bit of a grassy side over it. Can you see it over there, Joe?
I'm proposing not to pull any dredge out at all.
Okay. Or, otherwise, it's, all that sand is going to go downstream.
It is. It'll wash through like it has.
It'll fill in holes further down. So, you may not want to let that continue downstream in the large quantities that we're talking about there. It's something to think about. But anyhow, bifurcating it there would allow us to keep a waterfall, a pool of water at a little higher level. The waterfall feature would be maybe only 10 inches high instead of 14 inches high, so we don't go too far back. But the other side would be like the boulder creek that you're talking about, and would gradually step down to the level below that where the waterfall is now. It would be a little bit more expensive if it preserves our little waterfall. Our objection is, is that you're getting a permit, so to speak, or permission, to request a permit for something that we have not really agreed on the design yet. We would like to kind of see a preliminary idea, get that set in a preliminary way, we can preserve our waterfall and have a fish stream. If the DNR says we can do that ahead of time, and the design that is actually pushed through, which we don't have it, you know, if it's once it's permitted by you guys, we no longer have a say. It's done. The city of Cold Spring says, "It's blessed, it's gone," and DNR's going to do what they want. They're going to consult with us, but they'll have the final say, and we have no leverage. We would just like to have a little leverage to say, "All right, look at something like this. Would they agree to something like that? Would they would agree to something like that? We'll be all for it."
I guess that's the way I see it, it's going to be, that you're requesting is saying that we're going to do, we're requesting to have an application, to have the DNR look at this and put a plan together, and then it comes back to everybody, all the parties involved.
My question is, is once that application is done, does the city or the residents have any further say, once that's?
Well, we have to, I mean, but it's an application, it's not permission to do anything.
That's what we're concerned with, that once it gets the ball rolling, is it become an automatic thing where really there is no further?
Yeah. So, does anyone, has anyone seen, have you seen this application? Do you, can you, I mean, I know like as a city...
It's not a formal application. Basically, it would, basically, it was a letter of request to the Soil and Water Conservation District to provide a plan. The Soil and Water Conservation District does this for free as a service to the city and residents. And they are the specialists that do this kind of thing. They're not the ones that'd be issuing a permit, that would be DNR. They're just doing this, they're doing this basically pro bono, to try to settle this issue and to help this out. But they are the, you know, they would be basically providing technical services. So, what Doug's provided is a good start.
Is a start. I was going to say, that can go to whoever's going to design it, and at least that's a start for them to know what the residents want.
It is a start. I don't know that the DNR would allow a fish ladder, we're not talking about salmon, we're talking about some pretty small aquatic fauna that aren't able to really make it around, even using a fish, you know, some kind of artificial.
Well, I use that term in that it is a gradual thing. It's going to be like, you said you want rocks and rapids and stuff like that.
I think what they're, what they're primarily looking for is to remove the primary impediment that goes across the creek. And if they can, if they can break that up, if they can find a way that, that's not a continuous stopgap across the creek, that might suit the bill. I don't know, I'm not a specialist at it. I just know that they are saying, they're telling me that that dam itself is not, is a water structure that they would not approve of, and should be removed for the benefit of that aquatic environment. And hopefully, we can do something that would benefit the entire community by doing so.
But at least, you can give them that, if, that's if we say okay, yes.
Right, now, right.
Yes, then, yeah, I understand that part of it, too.
I mean, I would be concerned about that, too.
Yes.
But that, I look at it and say that that's not the route it's taking, at least from my perspective. I'm not voting to move forward with anything other than getting some type of draft design.
You're just getting a draft design that you can take a look at it in your, at whatever timeframes you want to put to it, and decide what you, decide when and if you like it. It's not something that you're saying you have to agree to do at all tonight.
Who says, who's paying for it, and all of these things. There are so many things that go into it.
The other question that came up from other residents was, if they're bringing in boulders and stuff like this, how is that going to get to that location? Is it going to be coming over our lawn? How is this going to be brought in? There is some concern, you know, that coming over the top of our property with heavy equipment and doing any heavy work is a concern, and I'm not sure how that would be done.
I'm not sure, but I'm hoping that, from what the preliminary talks we had with the Granite Company, there's specialists doing that kind of thing, too, with less impact. So, we're hoping that if that does, comes to fruition, and if you like it, and if it works, and we can put something in there, that they would be the specialists to help bring that in.
Question. Who did you talk to at the Granite Company?
Who have I talked with the Granite Company? I went up to the front office or the main offices. We've talked about this for a number of years, actually, with the Granite Company. And they've been willing to provide some, they've been willing to provide us with a number of things. They've actually provided some materials at the school for us, and we've talked about this project together with them as well.
You know, we've worked at the Granite Company for a long time, we know a little bit about what's going to happen.
Oh, yeah, I know you do. I know a lot of you guys do. I understand it. We're hoping, I mean, this is just a possibility. This isn't something that we're saying has to happen. We're saying, I mean, we're saying if we want something that kind of is more representative of the community, it's just a possibility. It doesn't mean it's something that has to be something. It could be other things. You could put in, you know, timber, something, it could be any kind of things that could be, could be used. And I'm not the specialist at designing these that would be in Soil and Water Conservation District, so they'll put together some ideas and you can pick at it.
Another thing, we had the watershed lady come right down that pit, and she said it really looks pretty beautiful around here.
I think it looks beautiful, too.
Why do we want to do anything?
Well, because that dam, that, well, I'll call it a dam, I'll call it an artificial water, water structure, it basically splits that stream in half, prevents the lower part of the stream and the upper part of the stream from mixing together.
Okay.
It is impeding that.
We're done, we're done, we're done, we're done. We're just going to keep on rehashing, we're going to keep rehashing this all night long, we're not going to do that. We're not going to answer any more questions. We are going to go through this recommendation right now. Recommendation to approve or deny the request that the city of Cold Spring submit an application for a dam removal plan and draft redesign from the Stearns County Soil and Water Conservation District for Cold Spring Creek. I need a motion up or down.
I would make a motion to approve.
Jamie makes a motion to approve, how about a second?
I second that.
Shannon seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. There.
Would you like me to submit the drawing?
That drawing should go with, yes, please.
I think it has to come on city letterhead, so I think.
So, all they would need then basically would be a letter from the city requesting that, as we request that.
And I'll reference it, so.
And I'll reference it and submit this with it.
Thank you.
All right, number nine. Trail easements for the trail in Blue Heron Heights.
As you know, about a year ago, George and Jan Dingman bought a house on Blue Heron Heights and the outlet trail ran along that property line with the one they bought. And then the, at the time, it was a tax forfeited property. Now they've bought that one. And so they have, they have signed and agreed to put the same easement on the south side of the trail that they already signed to the north side of the trail.
Okay. Recommendation: To approve entering into a trail easement agreement with George and Jan Dingman for, for a trail in Blue Heron Heights on property legally described as Lot 3 Block 1, Blue Heron Heights, Second Edition. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second that.
Shannon seconds it. Any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number 10. Discussion on issues with the township fire contract formula. Sue Cadlock.
Will you verify that that, the, the line is down and not?
The line is down.
There you go. No, I can hear you in here.
Okay. Good evening, council members. Mayor, Bridgette invited me here today to talk about the fire contract. It seems, as she pointed out in her memo, there's been a misunderstanding about how the reimbursement with the, the various townships is calculated. And Wakefield Township has brought it to a head by, they're saying they're not going to pay what we have determined should be their allocation. And the problem arose when during negotiation of the contract, a certain set of numbers was used regarding property values, even though it was contradictory to what was stated in the contract for the formula. So we were assumed, based on this assumption, that we were working with these numbers. We came up with the reimbursement formula and thought we had a meeting of the minds as far as what the, the contributions would be. So now here we are a year later and we're about $4,000 off between, this is just for the Wakefield Township allocation. This is a three-year contract, I believe. So the question is, what do you want to do about it? You know, in a contract, we do have to have a meeting of the minds. We have a very strong argument here saying that there was no meeting of the minds based on this, this discrepancy. So we can approach it at that angle. We can, we can send a notice to terminate the contract, but I think we have to be ready for the consequences that we're no longer going to have a Wakefield contribution unless they come back to the table and we negotiate something different.
Okay, so where do we go?
The termination provision, we have to give one year's notice. So it does allow them ample time to find, you know, their fire service provider elsewhere. It does allow some ample time to maybe come back to the table. But, you know, we have to give the notice to start that period running.
I mean, that's not something that I'd like to do.
No.
I mean, that's not, that's not ideal.
So you're giving us three options?
There really are. One is to do nothing and then we just absorb the, the difference between the calculations. Two is to give the notice and terminate the contract. Three really is to try and force the issue and say, no, we're not going to accept your partial payment. We want full payment. We actually have a 60-day notice under, if there's a breach in the contract, but I think they're tender of, at least what they believe is the payment. I, I don't think we can go under the 60-day notice of termination. I think we're under the year.
I mean, I, I guess I look at it and I, I don't want termination. But I also don't want to just say, forget it. I mean, I, I guess I don't know where the discrepancy ended up coming in, where it seems like all of a sudden, everyone was good for a while and then all of a sudden, there's this discrepancy and now.
Well, we, we only send out a bill annually.
Right.
And that's why it didn't arise before now. So the issue is using the entire taxable value of the township or the improved land's taxable value.
Do we need to make a decision tonight?
There's no urgency, no.
Can we table this until?
Doug's available?
Well, until our 9/24 meeting so we can absorb this.
9/24?
Sorry, 9.
August 27th? It's August 27th. Or the 9/24, yeah, 9/24.
9/24 meeting?
Yep.
Oh.
And we might have some more responses from the other townships. We have a similar issue with their contracts.
I would agree with that.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion to table this until 9/24 September meeting.
I'll second that.
Jamie makes a motion to table this. Shannon seconds it. Any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
All right.
All right.
Thanks, Sue.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, number 11. Public Works Director report. John Stevie along with Brian Litchin.
Good evening. The first thing I got on my report tonight is the no-through-street sign placement at the apartment complex. They approached us and on the west end of their, their entrance there, they'd like to put up something that would notify the residents or who aren't residents at the apartment that it's not a through-street. They did put up a private property sign on the south entrance, so just need approval to put up a sign at the west entrance.
Recommendation, oh, go ahead.
I would assume people are going through there to look at it. I drive through there at least once a week to look at it. I'm on my moped, not a car, but I just want to see this.
There's probably a lot of that.
Yeah, right now, there's going to be, and there will be a lot, I think.
I'm assuming it'll die off, but I'm, I don't, you can read their recommendation. I just wanted to make that comment.
I've, I've driven through there already too, just to see what it's like.
They're requesting this, so if they don't want viewers, that's their deal, I guess.
Recommendation: To approve the placement of a no-through-street sign at the end of First Street North. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Jamie makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second that.
Shannon seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
All right, the next item is the purchase of the box and hoist for the snow hauler. The beginning of the year, yeah. Beginning of the year, we did buy two trucks that we, Ron is building into snow haulers. One is completed. The other one is the beer truck we bought. And he's, we just took the box off it, brought it to O.P.A.T.S. and we got almost $1,000 for the box, so that was really nice. But now he needs to purchase the new box for it and the hoist to be able with the store. It's, he found one down in Jackson, Minnesota from Erickson Truck Parts for the price of $3,880 and that come out of budget line item. Streets and Capital, 6413.
Recommendation: To approve the purchase of a box and hoist from Erickson Truck Parts at a cost of $3,880 and furthermore, to be paid out of the Streets Capital expenditures, line item, line item 6413. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
The cool part about those trucks is we stayed way under budget on them. We got some good deals on the vehicles and then with Ron building them, I don't even think we're going to come close to half of what we budgeted for them.
Oh, really?
That's pretty cool.
Good.
Next item is we got contacted by Holucky Brothers, letting us know that salt is going up this year. So we'd like to purchase 100 tons of it. It'll probably be two to three weeks out yet before we get it, but they needed the purchase agreement signed. So looking to get 100 tons of that at $102 per ton.
Recommendation: To approve the purchase of 100 tons of road salt from Holucky Brothers at a price of $102 per ton for a total of $10,200 and furthermore, to be paid out of Street Department's salt, sand line, line item 6315. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Excuse me. Do you have any idea how much we used last year?
Uh, last year, we burned up about, we, so we, we usually get a load in the fall. With this, we'll be our load in the fall and then we usually get one in the spring or early, not spring, but like late winter. And we burned through just about all of it.
Approximately how many ton?
Uh, 200 ton.
200?
Yeah, usually it's always 100 ton in the fall and 100 ton in the late winter.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Um, the next item I have is for the last couple of years, we've been using a gentleman's lowboy trailer to haul our cement blocks around and if need to remove a loader around town. He's come forward now and said he's interested in donating that to us. Said the value was 2,500. We haven't found any information on it yet as to why it comes up with that value. If I had to guess and Ron had to guess, we figured it'd probably be worth a little bit more than that, but 2,500 is, is what it is. That's what he's looking to get out of it for a donation. So we just need to accept of that.
Okay. Recommendation: To approve Resolution 2019-20, a resolution accepting a gift of the lowboy semi-trailer from Reed Meyer. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion on it? Do we need a, we don't need to put a price on it then?
Does it count as a recommendation?
It's on the res, okay, okay, okay. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Reed. We're all.
Yeah, thank you.
Little update on the pilot study. We're in the final phase. We are trying to do some backwash recycle. It really hasn't gone as well as planned yet, but we're not really looking to maybe use that in the future, but we're trying to take advantage of us having the pilot on site right now instead of building the plant, putting recycle in it and then having to do another pilot for recycle in the future. The recycle will only save about 10% of the water. We're actually looking at infiltrating it on-site, back into the ground because there'll be no nitrate going into the water or into the ground, back into the aquifer. And there's no confining layer up there, so we can get rid of the water pretty quick. Staff-wise, we're all kind of on board for the infiltration process, but StanTech and Ad Edge are, they, they'd like to see us do this recycle just because the pilot is here, which makes sense. So we're going through that phase right now, but outside of that, everything's looked great on it and basically maybe have a week and a half left and get NTH approval on it. So we're excited to get out of the phase of the pilot. It's a lot of work, I mean, it's a lot, it was a lot of work throughout this process because it wasn't just hands-off. There's a lot of variables involved with the brewery. I, obviously, they, they were super great to work with as far as letting us in the building and, and stuff like that, but the pilot only runs so often when their line is running. So when it's not running, there's a lot of technical difficulties that happen. So it was more work for staff keeping it rolling, but you know what, we're at the end point now, so there's light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah, good.
We're excited about moving forward in the future, that's for sure.
That's it?
That's all I got.
Anybody got questions for John?
I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, by the pillar end on that light, light post, there's American flags still up on that one. I know they were taken off all the other ones, but there's still one up.
Where is it?
Outside the pillar end. Just right, there's.
Right up here by pillar?
Yeah.
I'll talk to Paul about that tomorrow.
Thank you. I forgot to bring it up last time. I'm like, oh, I have to remember.
He's got to go back up. He's got to put a banner up by Red River and then we had two brackets break up in the roundabout.
Okay.
So we're waiting for Design Electric to get those two out and then he's going to go back out and put some up, so hopefully that'll be, well, he can, he can take that flag down tomorrow, but hopefully we'll see some banners.
It doesn't hurt my feelings that it's up. I just thought it was out, it was the only one.
It is odd.
Anything else for John? Please, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to number 12. City Engineer Report. Brian Litchin.
Mr. Mayor and Council, 158, I think yesterday I got the soil borings back, so we'll be incorporating those into the report. I don't have an exact date. If all goes well on writing it, I'll be in contact with Bridgette and we can look at maybe the next meeting. If not, it'll probably be the following meeting or the first meeting in September where we would present the report.
Okay.
After that, if you're acceptable of the report, we would call for the improvement hearing and then there's advertisements and letters and things that need to get sent out to follow the assessment process. So first step would be getting the report to you and having a little presentation on that, see if there's any questions and if we want to move forward. Water treatment, John really covered. We'll be working with John and his staff here coming up in the next month or so here and start really looking at designs, plant layouts, materials, you know, everything that we need to do to kind of do the preliminary design, keep things moving. So that starts the fun part. And River Lakes, they're working still on the roadway stuff. I think Herb is going to be in the next week or two. Moving along with that.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Nothing? Any questions for Brian? All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll go on to number 13. Police Department Report. Chief Bloom.
Mr. Mayor and Council, good evening. Um, start with just some updates for the month of June. In the city of Cold Spring, we had 373 total incidents, 25 medicals, 14 suspicious activities, 132 traffic stops with 138 warnings and 48 violations. In those, there were 14 narcotics violations, five warrant arrests and one DWI. This is a little closer. Sorry, I'll speak up. And then 202 miscellaneous calls for service. In Richmond, we had 105 total incidents, seven medicals, five suspicious activities, 32 traffic stops with 39 warnings and five citations and one narcotics violation and then 61 miscellaneous calls for service. June, July are busy months for us, I'm glad to be through them and hopefully as we go towards school, it kind of slows down a little bit, but everything over the summer I think went pretty well.
Good.
Moving on, kind of been updating you throughout the whole process of trying to purchase a new squad car for this year. Normally, we try to purchase them December, January and get them equipped for the spring. With the remodel or rebuild of the new Fords, it kind of pushed everything back. Now that they're out, we can still get the SUVs, like we've had, the interior design is a little bit different, but we can still get the gas motor instead of getting the more expensive hybrid motor which they designed for this year. Maybe somewhere down the road, we could look at that and what that would look like for fuel savings, as that's the biggest thing that they're trying to sell everybody on is that with the hybrid, you use less fuel. So, and with the new design, I wouldn't recommend going with that yet until they kind of work the kinks out for the next couple of years, so hopefully in the, in the future, we get some information and see if it's worth going to something like that. But got a copy for a new Ford interceptor for this year.
Okay. Recommendation: To approve the purchase of a 20, a 2020 Ford interceptor from Schweeder's Ford of Montevideo for a price of $32,994 and furthermore to be paid out of Fund 26, the gambling fund. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second.
Gary seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you. And with that, we need to equip it, so the next recommendation for the equipment, right now, our SRO squad doesn't have a radio in it, we'd like to cycle that, or cycle one of the two Impalas out to be a fully equipped squad so it can be used during the summer as well. Right now, it's kind of a stripped-down version where the officer had to use their portable, it's still have the cage and everything, but just a little bit less equipment, we'd like to keep that as a fully equipped one so we can use that throughout the summer events and everything too. So, the equipment would be, yeah, to equip it and then also a new radio for the squad car.
Recommendation: To approve the purchase of equipment for the interceptor from RWB Emergency Lighting for a cost of $6,336 and Granite Electronics at a cost of $4,790.25 for a total cost of $10,793.61 and furthermore to be paid out of Fund 26, the gambling fund. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you. In the June 11th meeting, approved officer, one of our part-time officers, Dean Baumgartner, to be moved up to the full-time spot, or the new full-time spot on September 1st. With that, we put stipulations that he had to pass, updated psychological and background or criminal history check, which both of them have been completed, so looking for a final approval for him for the position starting September 1st.
Alright, recommendation: To approve Dean Baumgartner as a full-time police officer with the start date of September 1, 2019. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, I need a second.
Second that.
Shannon seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Someone's job?
Yes. Good question.
Yep, no, he's very excited about it, kind of a transition for him, so he's very excited about moving to be full-time with us.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
You are good about asking that every time. And then we also had a vehicle forfeiture, an alcohol forfeiture that we had sealed bids for, we received one bid and just looking for approval to accept that.
Recommendation: To, to accept the bids for the 1999 Ford F-150 XLT pickup truck and award the sale of said vehicle to the apparent high bidder, John Stevie, for $301. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, I need a second.
Good luck.
Jamie seconds it, any discussion on it?
Does that count for check?
I hope.
Cash?
Cashiers check.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Just a couple other things going on in town. It wasn't here, it was actually over in Richmond, we had an individual posing as a local cable company, Arvig I believe it was, they had letterhead paperwork to make them look legitimate. Some people ended up calling the company, the company said, no, we don't have anybody going door-to-door soliciting any information from people. They were looking for checking information and signing documents and personal information, so it's kind of an expansion of the phone scams, it's now a door-to-door scam which isn't really anything new. But it's just an expansion on a different type of scam. If there's anybody that knocks any door that's questionable, I just ask you either contact the police department, contact City Hall, see if there's any peddler's permits that have been issued, ask them for employer identification, normally if they are going to door, they will have some type of identification showing them as legitimate business. They're also required to get a peddler's permit before going door-to-door so we'd at least have their information in case any issues come up later. So, if there's anything that doesn't seem right, make a few phone calls and try and check into that before giving out any personal information. And then also a follow-up, you brought up the issue with traffic at Main Street and 23, I talked with MINDOT and they are working on installing a program for different periods of the day to help the traffic flow there to keep the left turn or green light for Main Street traffic light on longer, so it's in the process, I don't think they've installed that yet, but they're working on it.
Good, thank you.
And that's all I have, unless you guys have questions for me.
Have you got anything?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And we go on to number 14, City Administrator Report.
Well, the first item is, every three years, there's a contract negotiation with the police union and then the municipal employees, and it is that time of year again to, to have that negotiation committee together, so it's typically two council members, and so I'm looking for people to join me on the negotiation committee.
I will read the recommendation, to approve the appointment of two council members to the contract negotiating, negotiation committee, I need a motion.
What do you want to...
Oh, should we, should we figure it out? Let's figure that out first.
Those are daytime meetings?
Yes, they're daytime meetings.
I'll volunteer.
Thank you, Gary.
Um, Councilmember Schmidt did notify me that he wasn't gonna be here tonight and that he would be willing to sit on that committee as well.
I've done it once already, so I'm okay with those two.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
So it'll be those two along with this, now I need a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Shannon makes a motion, Shannon makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Jamie seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
And the next one's just an update, the annual League of Minnesota Cities Regional Meetings schedule is out the October 16th, it's a Wednesday this year, and it is in Wait Park. If you're interested, just shoot me an email, the registration hasn't happened, I'll send you a notice when registration's open.
Say I am interested, so you just put your name in.
Yeah, yeah, and so I'll just remind you via email when it's open and you can let me know if you want me to register you.
Perfect.
And last, speaking of the water treatment plant, the purchase of the land, we had some issues with the pipeline that goes through Mr. Schmidt's land, the company has now confined that easement to his remaining parcel and we have a waiver of either of the two city parcels, the one with the water tower and the one that we are, is under our purchase agreement, those two parcels are no longer restricted by that easement. All that documentation is ready and we have set up September 5th at about 3 o'clock in the afternoon for closing, so that morning is the budget meeting and then in that afternoon, the mayor and I will go and sign the closing documents and it will be in our possession and ready for design from Stantec.
Alright.
And that is all I have.
That's it. Any questions for Bridgette? Otherwise, we'll move on to number 15, List of Bills and Additions. Recommendation: To review and accept payment of accounts payable according to the list and supplemental list presented by city staff. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion, how about a second?
Can I ask one question?
Yes, go ahead.
The radio readers, is that the last purchase, the batch, or is this the first batch? This is the first, we have one more to go? Okay. Perfect.
Okay.
2006 this year and 247.
Okay. Now I need a second.
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. General questions from comments from city council, Jamie got anything?
Nothing for me.
What Shannon?
Nope, I see Lee.
Gary? I have nothing. Number 17, Motion to Adjourn. Gary makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it, any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you very much.